Okay, welcome everybody to the June 2nd workshop session of the Lewiston City Council. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to public comments at LewistonMaine, public comment, no S, at LewistonMaine.gov prior to or during the meeting. And all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. People who would like to access the meeting by phone may contact 207-513-3021 for an access code before 5:00 PM of the day of the meeting. So it's kind of silly reading that at this point, but. So tonight's workshop is the Nino Corporation request for reimbursement and Ed will give us the details of that and fill us in and we're going to be bringing in some folks I think soon here.
Okay, I can start off by giving you a little history. I will tell you there was a century rather long memo and part of the reason it was so long was trying to recreate what had happened over the last 15 years and trying to dig into a lot of information that was conflicting and not as clear as one would hope. But this all goes back to 2005 when the Nino Corporation was putting in a convenience store gas station out on Outer Lisbon Street. They needed a traffic movement permit for that project and that traffic movement permit was going to require a left turn lane. So they had a couple of options on how they could achieve that. They could either expand the street, which was at that time four lanes, two in, two out, to a five lane street with a turn lane in the middle. Or they could modify the system to a three lane street with a double turn lane in the middle. So they went to the planning board. Planning board granted them a permit in August of 2005, subject to the city council agreeing to go to the three lane section. There was some controversy over that. I understand there was a number of public meetings, both just to discuss that, plus at the planning board and at the city council level where there were some people who were concerned that going to a three lane section was going to be problematic in terms of traffic flow out there. But the city council on the day after the planning board meetings on August 5th approved the reconfiguration of Lisbon Street from four to three lanes, but they did so all the way from the town line to Westminster Street. The traffic movement permit from the planning board only required it to be done into, I think it was South Lisbon, the intersection of South Lisbon Road in Lisbon. So they added a whole section there all the way into in town. They voted for the Nino Corporation to pay for the expenses of restriping the street from the town line to the main turnpike, which again varied a little bit from the planning board. They asked the staff to draft a traffic impact ordinance to recover funds on this project and future projects to pay for the upgrade of the street to five lanes. And they indicated that Nino's expenses for lane reconfiguration from the turnpike bridge to the town line would be, would apply toward as a credit against the impact fee that Nino Corporation would have to pay under the impact fee ordinance, which hadn't yet been adopted. So that was a kind of before the fact application of an ordinance. Given all these actions, Nino Corporation agreed to go ahead and make the change. It then got even more confusing because as that change started, there were apparently arrangements made between city staff and Nino Corporation as to who was going to do what part of the work. Nino agreed basically to do the grinding, to get rid of the old lane markings. The city agreed to do the painting as the project started. The city also realized that nobody was taking care of the temporary markings that needed to be applied in the interim to guarantee traffic was moving correctly or for the signage. So the city did both of those parts of the project as well. So the city spent $10,000, a little about $10,500 on the project, of which Public Works estimated about $8,500 was attributable to the section of the project that Nino was responsible for from the interstate bridge to the town line. The council then later went ahead and adopted the impact fee ordinance and that further confused the issue because as you track certain memos, sometimes numbers were used based on how the impact fee ordinance was written, where the credit was 50% of the improvements, but that didn't apply really to what was done because the Nino project was already done by the time the impact fee ordinance went into effect. So the council's final action after another series of rounds of meetings where different motions were made was that the city would reimburse Nino Corporation for any costs above and beyond what its impact fee would be, that the reimbursement would specifically come from any impact fee revenues collected in the future. And that meeting was in January of 2006. They said January 2007, one year later, as the date that the council would reconvene to see how things were going and how much of the payment had been made to Nino. What was still alone, there was some concern that things might go on forever and not get cleared up in the meantime. They never actually went back and revisited the issue. Nino was reimbursed $24,300 from another project out there for the Pathways Final Vineyard Church. That reimbursement was made in, I think, 2007. The council never went back and revisited this. So the situation as I understand it today, looking at the finances, are that Nino presented invoices to the city that totaled $60,259.07. That was $44,400 to Zebra Striping for removal of the lanes of the old lane markings. $15,859 to TSI Technical Services, which did the traffic engineering on the project. So it totaled to $60,260 roughly. Against those expenses, Nino was credited the $24,300 reimbursement from Vineyard Church and was given a credit of $31,500, which was the city's calculation of what his impact would have been had the project been done under the impact fee ordinance. So that leaves a balance of about $4,459.07. One complicating factor that we got into and Nino and I have discussed a lot of this right to this point, everybody's in agreement. The issue is that there was that extra about $8,500 that the city spent on Nino's portion of the project from the interstate out to the town line. Of that, the city actually should have built, could have and may have, and we don't know if they did, billed about $6,000, which was the part other than the routine traffic painting, which the city felt it was going to have to do anyway. So the question then arises as to whether the city ever billed Nino for that or whether Nino ever paid that. We have no records at the city that we ever did. If I had to guess, I would say we probably didn't because there seemed to be an awful lot of confusion about what was being done, who was doing it and when it was being done and how it was to be handled. So I'm not sure that ever, ever happened. Nino has indicated that what he would like is to be reimbursed, the $4,459. That's the excess that he did not recover over the invoices I have from his traffic engineer and from the striping company. And the $5,953.68 if the city billed him, subject to Nino finding some proof that we did that. We could not find anything in our records. I doubt that we ever did it. He has not as of yet found anything in his records, but certainly he may, he may still be looking. I don't know what his status of that is. I know he hasn't necessarily had time to look through all of those records. So the question is, what are the options that the council has? The first one is to simply go ahead and reimburse Nino Corporation from the city's general fund in at least the amount of $4,459.07 and potentially an additional $6,000 or so if Nino can show proof that he was billed and paid some city expenses on the project. The second option that the council could consider is kind of a reaffirmation of the action in 2007. I went back and listened to the tape of that meeting. And two things were pretty clear as you, as you listened to it. First, the council at that time wanted Nino to be reimbursed for any additional expenses over the impact fee. And second, the council did not want that reimbursement to come from the city's taxpayers. They really wanted it to come from future projects. As you may know, the projects out there that have paid, basically Nino's project contributed toward the improvements out there and the Baptist, the church's project contributed toward it. Both of those projects would have and could have been required to expend total, a lot more money on the entire project. In other words, Nino could have been charged the full amount as a result of the traffic movement permit. Could have done probably less and then potentially the church could have been charged again for doing off-site traffic improvements at that location. And certainly the project that's before this, that is in front of the city at the moment for the relocation of the Dunkin' Donuts could also be hit for that kind of traffic improvement. This is an unusual situation. The city generally has not reimbursed people in the past for traffic improvements, off-site traffic improvements. As you may recall, recently there's Dunkin' Donuts going in on Main Street. That developer is responsible for the full price of any off-site improvements there. They aren't as significant as what was done in Outer Lisbon Street however. But another example is the Dunkin' Donuts on Sabata Street. That project was required to put in a signalized traffic intersection that probably ran in the range of $150,000 to $200,000. In order to get their permit to do the project, they had to make those improvements. That's generally been how the city has done it in the past. I'm not going to sit here and argue that that's always fair because it's the last guy in the door who kicks over the standard that the state is concerned about that's required to address that standard. So one of the ideas of having an impact fee is to spread that out over the benefiting projects. But that is pretty much what I think the situation is. Now, as I said, I think the two options are if the city either reimbursed Nino, the $4,459.07 with the caveat that should he produce evidence that he actually paid the city for some of the city's work on the project, that that be reimbursed as well. I would put a time limit on that last part so that it's not just an open-ended thing, but maybe 30 days or so to produce any evidence of that. Or the other option, and this ties in with what's on the agenda later tonight, is you can simply leave the existing traffic, traffic impact ordinance in place until the current project is, pays that fee. Use part of that fee to reimburse Nino Corporation for what it's owed. And since we're never going to really expand that street to five lanes and it was the part of the purpose of the impact fee ordinance, reimburse the developer of the Dunkin' Donuts project out there for any overage that's left over. So that's pretty much it. I'll be glad to try to answer questions. This took a lot longer than I thought it would, trying to figure out the history of the whole thing. And I hope that kind of gives you a picture of where we were and how we got here.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And I see Nino Corporation is represented here at this meeting. So we probably should, you know, give him an opportunity if he has anything he'd like to add to this conversation before I turn it over to councilors.
Nino, you're on mute. Can you unmute your telephone?
Does he have to hit anything specific?
Does anybody remember how to unmute?
Is it star nine, is that?
I believe it's star nine is what I'm recalling.
Nino, if you wish to speak, if you could just hit star nine and try that. Okay, I'll turn it over to the council for questions or comments. And if he is able to come into, or wishes to discuss anything, then we'll allow him to do that. Councilors, any questions or comments?
Mr. Connor may want to speak as well since he is with the Dunkin' Donuts project that I pulled in here in one of the options.
Yeah.
Okay.
My God.
Yeah, there's nothing from the councilors at this point, then I'll turn it over to, does Mike, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the option of paying the $4,000 some odd dollars would be appropriate. And also with a time limit in regards as to the individual coming up with a receipt of some sort that identifies that they've paid what they may have or may not have. So, yes, to me, that would be the simplest route to go into. However, I'm sure there'll be other discussions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gatto, do you have anything you'd like to add to the conversation?
I don't think we have anything to add. We're listening in because we're obviously interested in what your solution's going to be.
Okay, good. Thank you. And that goes for you as well, Mr. Connor.
It does.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just, I'm concerned that Nino's not able to connect with us. I just want to make sure that we have a way to.
Yeah, Mayor, I can unmute him, so I'm going to try to unmute him and see if we can connect with him.
Okay. Hi, Nino, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, sir.
We apologize for this. That's my first time.
We were all there not too long ago, trust me. You, did you, were you able to hear the presentation by the city administrator?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
And do you have anything you'd like to add to the conversation, sir?
Right now, the question is to reimburse that $4,459 something like that. And I just wanted to say that that was the final action done by the city council is to reimburse me of anything above and beyond the impact fee that they decided. Now, the impact fee is what I wanted to ask about. If this ordinance were to be repealed, does that mean we get reimbursed for the impact fee altogether? Just a question for the council. Because I'm under the impression this is leading to repealing the ordinance done by the city council back in 2005. And my question again is if this was to be repealed, does not make for reimbursing the impact fee that has to do with this ordinance? Given the fact that it was set to be, it's being collected to be put into an account, separate account, to do the improvements? If this were to go back to be in five lanes in the future, which the city is saying right now that there's no need for that. So if there's no need for that, why isn't that money, the impact fee, being returned to the people that paid it already? Since this whole ordinance is being repealed, as I understand.
Okay, thank you. Ed, could you respond to that?
Sure, I can start. First off, the agreement between the city and Nino Corporation was separate and in advance of the actual adoption of the impact fee ordinance. The impact fee ordinance was intended to be a way for the city to use other folks' payments to the city to reimburse Nino. So it stands totally separate, was an agreement, it went into effect, was agreed upon on by the council before the impact fee ordinance went into effect. Secondly, the ordinance itself allowed a collection of funds for what was termed in the ordinance, I believe, interim improvements. And those were improvements that were required to deal with traffic issues before we got to the point of doing the full five lanes. So for example, if Nino's project had not done the three lane change and another project came along, that project would have been required to perhaps put in a five lane section. That was an option that Nino had. And if they had done that, that would have been an interim improvement, just as what was done in this instance was an interim improvement. So I don't think Nino has an argument there because his agreement predated the impact fee ordinance. And the impact fee ordinance only got pulled into it as a basis for the city determining how much it reimbursed him. And I would also indicate that there was, that the council decided to do that on its own. There was no obligation for the council to actually do that. He could have been simply asked to do what the planning board required, South Lisbon Road to the town line in three lanes and at 100% of his cost.
All right, thank you. Nino, I'm prepared now to turn this over for discussion by the council, but is there anything else you'd like to add before I do that?
No, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Steph, Councilor Jelineus, did you have a question or comment? Okay, Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask one question of the city administrator. If we go through with the reimbursement of the approximately $4,000, what precedent would this set for anybody else? Is anybody else involved in this? And the, and the fringe here that's going to set us up for further action or not?
I don't, people could always make an argument. You know, as Nino was making an argument that he perhaps should not have even been required to pay the 31.5 effectively, which he did. I'm sure the church could make that argument and potentially the new company that's looking out there could make that argument. I will tell you that Nino in particular got a good deal here because otherwise a good portion of this he would have had to have paid for. I suspect his section may well have extended to the church area. So the church may not have had to spend anything to meet a traffic movement permit. I don't know, David, David's on the line. He may know whether, I think, yeah, because it was all the way to the town line. So the church would have benefited by Nino's expenditure. But basically, the way the thing works is that's why this is an unusual situation is that everybody else that's done anything in the city that's been required to do an off-site traffic improvement has had to pay for it themselves as part of the project.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Councilor Clement, before I move to Councilor Wright?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with Councilor LaJoy. I could see a way that we could reimburse the $4,000. I don't think we should go anything above and beyond that. And I agree that the impact fee is a separate action. It's a previous council, hard to say just what was being thought at that time. And certainly the record is somewhat ambiguous on that. But I think I went on record the last workshop when we discussed this. I don't see any need for the ordinance. I'd be in favor of repealing it. And if we can somehow settle this out for the $4,000 to Nino, then I would go along with that. But I don't think we should go any deeper than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, this is super convoluted and I, yeah, it's a hard time tracking it and a hard time knowing what's the right move. So, so I have a couple of questions to help clarify that. So as you, as you were just saying, Mr. Barrett, this was more of a one-off agreement. It is, it does not have to do with policy or ordinance. Is that correct?
The original agreement with Nino, yes, was a one-off, was it a one-off agreement? And the ordinance got pulled in kind of after the fact as a way to deal with the longer, what was felt to be a longer-term traffic problem out there. But then was used, the formulas in the ordinance were retro, I don't know, not retroactively, whatever preactively is to Nino's situation in advance of actually adopting the ordinance.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was a one-off agreement. I think that's the safest way to look at it.
Okay. And so I guess one thing that I'm just wondering about and not to stall the process, but I guess one question is, it seems weird to me that the finance committee hasn't weighed in on this, given that it's not a policy discussion, but rather more procedural and more of that. That space to me. So I'm just curious if you could shed some light on what's coming right to council.
Yeah, I think that at the heart of this issue is first understanding the action that the city council took back in 2006. What did the, what did the council actually do? There was some confusion about that, but it's very clear that they want, that they, they wanted to, they, they agreed and adopted a motion to reimburse Nino for all of his expenses in excess of what his impact fee would have been had the impact fee ordinance been in effect at that time. So council intent was to reimburse him. The second intent was that they didn't really want to have the taxpayers do it, which is what we're getting into at this point. So I think it's not a question of the finance that falls within the finance committee's jurisdiction. It's a question of fact, what did the council want? And then what actually happened? And that's where some of this gets confusing in terms of why didn't the council meet a year later like they said they were going to? Why did the work get split up between Nino and the city without any kind of written agreement? Here as we can tell. So that's what confused the whole issue. So council intent and then what actually happened are the two issues that I see important here.
Okay, that, that's really helpful clarification. As I was reading through this, it was like, this doesn't have to do with the ordinance. And so that clarification feels important to me. I'm comfortable reimbursing the $4,500 or so that's outlined here. If there's, I do think we need to set a deadline though. If there is paperwork to substantiate other claims for reimbursement, then we, we should do what's right and make everyone whole and be done with this ordinance and this impact fee, in my opinion. But I think there should be a very firm deadline for that, especially given the financial situation the city currently finds itself in. So if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from councilors? Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When would we be taking action on this? I take it this is nothing that's up tonight. We're just discussing, but it'll be the next council meeting when we take.
That's correct. Yes, I'll put together a council order directing us to reimburse Nino for the 4,459.07. And I will include in that and anything additional that the city billed and he paid for on the project. But I'd set a deadline of 30 days for that to be provided.
Given the fact that we're going to do this the next council meeting, I'd cut that deadline down to 15 days. I think that's more than fair.
Okay, I'd be happy to shorten. A week would be good with me, but I want to make sure. It's a long time ago and it's hard to find all those old records.
All right, is the council in general okay with this being on the next city council agenda? And then obviously, the way it's worded doesn't govern how any counselor will vote on this. So there'll be further discussion next, next week as well. All right, anything else, Ed?
That's it on that one.
Okay. And I think with time in, I think we're perfect timing to go right into our council meeting. All right, welcome everybody. If we have new folks attending for the actual city council meeting. So welcome everybody to the June 2nd city council meeting. We are accepting public comments on any item appearing on the agenda and it may be sent to public comments@lewistonmaine.gov prior to discussion of the agenda item or during our meeting. And staff will make sure that the council is aware of those. Madam Clark, if you could call the roll for attendance?
For attendance, councilor from word one.
Present.
Word two.
Here.
Word three.
Present.
Word four.
Present.
Word five.
Present.
Word six.
Present.
And word seven.
Present.
Also present is Mayor Kier and City Minister. Also present, uh, is, uh, Mayor Kair and City Administrator Barrett, Deputy City Administrator Dennis Jote. Uh, the Finance Director Heather Hunter and myself, the City Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and roll call votes.
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Council of Board four.
Thank you, and the gender item number one.
Uh, and actually, Mr. Mayor, do we want to have the COVID update?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yep, Dennis, if you could.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, City Councilors. Just, uh, a few things since our last update. Obviously, um, with the the news in recent, uh, June first coming with the businesses reopening, a lot of staff time. Has been put into, uh, supporting our businesses during that recovery and reopening phase. Activities such as our economic development staff have been fielding calls, making actual, uh, outgoing calls and and engaging with businesses to understand a little bit more of what they're. Challenged with as they got closer to the date. So last week, it was a very busy week for for our staff in that regard. Our code and planning. City clerk, uh, staff all worked together, uh, very well to, uh, to streamline processes from the permitting. Um, in 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 liquor license, uh, process, just to, uh, again, try to turn these things around as quickly for our businesses. So. A lot of work was put in that regard last week, and I know a number of businesses did submit, uh, outdoor seating plans. Um, and different, you know, questions and just inquiries to our staff, and. I just have to really compliment staff overall, uh, from all of those departments I mentioned. Our Public Works Department, our Police Department, our Fire Department, you name it. Um, they just were turning things around very, very quickly for our businesses, and I think getting them answers, hearing their challenges. Coming up with simple solutions as best we could, things like, uh, offering chairs from our Recreation Department. For rental options for them to to use on a temporary basis if they need, if they were lacking the table tables and chairs. I just think it was an overall, uh, positive response, and I think this week is just continuing in that same regard. And and City Hall remains, uh, appointment, uh, only. Um, at this point, we're still seeing a very significant, uh, amount of appointments seem to be taking, uh, quite a few, and and residents seem to be taking that well. I, we are seeing a, we're anticipating a rather large increase of motor vehicle registrations. So I've been working with Heather Hunter, our Finance Director, and she is, uh, extending the hours of appointments. Four days a week, we will be accepting appointments beyond four thirty PM up until six thirty PM. Um, just to accommodate some of those, um, that influx or that larger volume, again, from a convenience standpoint, hopefully be able to respond that way. I think that's, uh, overall, uh, Ed mentioned it earlier, um, again, part of our economic development. Efforts in in business, you will see a loan program that, uh, with staff again has been working on all week to develop. It's a little bit more flexible. Um, and I think, uh, will hopefully meet more needs, uh, than we currently have for programs. So. That's, uh, that's the latest at this point. Answer any questions?
So I I have a a quick one, and you may have covered it. Hopefully I didn't miss it, but, uh, you know, right now we're doing it by appointments. But do we have some type of timeframe when we're thinking about, you know, kind of opening and, you know, obviously having social distancing, but actually opening the doors?
Yes, I did not cover, but yes, uh, we are discussing that, uh, internally here, and I think that, uh, we we anticipate to have a, uh, a decision by next week. On a firm date, but it's looking like, you know, if everything continues to trend where it's going, I think we're looking at within the next few weeks. We would start to open up, um, a little bit more beyond appointment only. What that looks like, I think we're still trying to, uh, work that out and and iron out some of those details.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilor Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dennis, for that update. Um, I know in in past conversations, um, I've had discussions with staff about. Um, the hours of City Hall and how they don't really work for working folks, and so it it's encouraging to hear that there's, um, maybe dipping a toe into changing the hours. Is that something that requires, um, any difference in the union contracts or personnel agreements, anything like that?
So this is actually going to have a cost of overtime, um, so that's why we're able to do this. I mean, so there is an impact from that standpoint. Um, if we wanted to make, uh, changes that, you know, to the hours like you're referring to on a more permanent basis, then that would absolutely need to be. Worked through with the unions and the contracts.
Okay, so it's being made available through overtime, and so will we be billing that or, um, coding that as a COVID nineteen cost in our system as well?
I'm going to ask, uh, Finance Director Heather Hunter how that's going to be coded.
Oh. We can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Heather.
No, you just muted yourself. It was, you're not on mute.
So Heather, if you go to the little carrot kind of near the microphone in the bottom left corner, um, you, it might have just switched from my microphone or on. Perhaps.
Not working.
Heather can get us that answer. Yeah.
I, so I only raise that, um, in in relation to the.
I suspect we, I suspect we will track it. I think there's a question about whether it will be a reimbursable expense or not.
Yeah, and so, um, we've been talking in the conversations with the federal delegation that I've been having, we've been pushing to say. You know, things other than PPE real really need to be covered, and so, um, I just want to make sure we're tracking it independent of. Not all overtime, I guess.
All right, good, thank you. Uh, I just want to add a little bit to, uh, some of the business conversation that Dennis shared today. I spoke with, uh. Jimmy and Linda Simone. They're working out a plan to open in the near future. It's going to take them a couple of weeks, but I, uh. I passed on a connection forum with Economic Development to help them work through a couple of things. And I do want to acknowledge, uh, our staff for some of the work that they've done over the past couple of weeks. We're here, I'm hearing good responses from several businesses, so thank you very much, Dennis. Before I move to, uh, is there any other, I'm sorry, any other questions or comments of Dennis by the council? Okay, seeing none, uh, before I move to agenda item number one, I just, you know, I spoke about public comment at the beginning with an email, but I just do, I want to remind. The public that's attending this meal, uh, attend in this meeting has, uh, attendees. That they just need to raise their hand. Staff will let the council know that, uh, we have a public, uh, comment, and then we'll make sure that we bring you in so that you can ask. Or ask questions or make a comment. Uh, with that said, agenda item number one, please.
Sure, um, item number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Sonder and Dram. Twelve Ash Street, requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Sonder and Dram twelve Ash Street.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Jalinas, and I'll open up the, uh, public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, if not. Uh, I'm, I'll close, uh, the public hearing, but, uh, I just, I want to remind the public that if, uh. Over the next minute or so, if they're trying to get clicked in, they'll be able to reach us. Okay, with that said, uh, call the roll.
Council from Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
And word three.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and Dennis, it looks like if you can bring in Bobby Avery. I believe Monique Roy and Superintendent Finn. I'm not sure I see him, but I thought he was there earlier. If you can bring them, bring, stop bringing that man. Uh, gender item number two, Kat.
Item number two, public hearing and presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty one school budget. There are two items. The first item is to receive a budget presentation from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. And if we could bring in Chairwoman Roy from the School Committee, Monique Roy. Good evening, Superintendent Finn.
Good evening.
Will you be presenting?
I will be presenting, um, and Bobby Avery, our Chief Administrative Officer, will also be presenting tonight.
All right, very good. If you could, uh, briefly go over, uh, uh, your presentation.
Absolutely. So good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and our city administrators as well as the city council. Earlier this spring, my team and I shared our full budget presentation to the city council and school committee during a joint session later. We shared an abbreviated and amended version of the school department budget to include a monumental collaborative effort between the city council. And the school committee through the application of our cares funds, which resulted in a decrease in the mill rate. By the way, through this innovative planning that we've done, uh, we've actually already seen significant savings, um, in our summer school programming. Dated on five twenty nine, I shared a memo with the city council and school committee that sums up where we stand tonight. I'd like to review that memo with you in collaboration with our Chief Administrative Officer, Bobby Avery, the best school system CFO in Maine. Um, I will give a brief introduction. Bobby will speak to the revenue and the expenditures, and then I'll wrap it up with a conclusion. In these times of uncertainty and struggle throughout of eleven city, I am pleased to present some good news. Our school department and city council have collaborated magnificently in preparation for the FY twenty twenty one budget referendum. The result of our goal oriented, data driven and innovative approach to funding excellence in education. While respecting the concerns of taxpayers is a significant decrease to the no rate. It is our belief that we can actually do more with a little less. There's our contention that we will see system wide improvement by meeting and exceeding our budgetary goals. Through steady handed leadership and innovative practices, system wide Lewiston Public Schools will continue to improve with your support. Based on data that includes our historic graduation rate, overall student attendance rate, teacher attendance rate, disciplinary actions. Special education systems and structures and English language learner engagement, the following goals were developed to address. The immediate needs for Lewiston Public Schools. Provide meaningful, intentional and sustainable professional development for all Lewiston Public Schools employees. Address equity and the opportunity gap. Provide improved instruction through social and emotional learning and a multi tiered system of support that is universal across Lewiston Public Schools. By addressing these obvious needs, we will be able to better prepare our hardworking teachers to take on the rigors of today's educational landscape. We will be able to ensure that students who are not accessing all that we have to offer truly have the opportunity to do so. We will be able to instill a curriculum that addresses not only core concepts. Of education, but also concepts such as self awareness, self management, social awareness, responsible decision making and building relationship skills. Training the educators we already have, providing for those who are missing out on being fully engaged. And addressing the social and emotional needs of our entire community will address the barriers to excellence. I'd like to ask Chief Avery to go over our expenditures and what our, um, our revenue, um, looks like, and then I will go ahead and wrap it up.
I'd love to. Thank you, Todd. Um, so we know that our budget request is eighty eight million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy eight dollars and five cents. That includes a two point nine two percent budget increase. We know that, um, during our budget workshops. We, um, on the revenue side, we've asked for a significant reduction to the additional local allocation. Um, of just a little bit over one million dollars. This does represent a forty one cent mill rate reduction. Um, to the budget, um, so that's a very high, very high level, um, overview. I do want to speak to what I consider to be this budget year. The most important part, and that is the process, and, um, I want to give a shout out to Heather Hunter. Heather, I, it's been a a pleasure working with you and collaborating with you, um, through this process. It hasn't been easy. And, um, I've been very grateful to be a part of a team with you, and I look forward to continuing to do that. I think that we have. You know, a a big road ahead of us still, and I'm really grateful that we can collaborate as we have. So I like, um, this, these folks on this grid. Um, to know how much I appreciate you, so thank you. I I'm, I'm, I can take questions. I mean, I gave a very high level, um, overview. Um, of the revenue side and the expenditure side, but if you want more detail, I'm certainly happy to, um, field questions.
All right, uh, so if I could, I'll turn it back over to Todd so that he could wrap it up, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Roy if she has any comments, and then I'll. Turn it over to the council for any questions or comments during the public hearing portion. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kair. I appreciate that. Um, first, I'd like to just thank, uh, everybody on this grid. Uh, for their support as a first year superintendent ever, not just here in Lewiston, um, the guidance that I received. By Mr. Barrett, by Heather, by every single person on this grid, the questions that you asked made us go back and get better. I I also want to point out that we've got ourselves, uh, on this grid, two folks who have served, um, as chair, who really taught me a ton. Uh, one is our current mayor and one, um, is our our current chair, Monique Roy, um, who has spent hours and hours, uh, with us, with my executive leadership team. Coming up with just a different way, uh, for us to budget, um, and rather than seem to to be two sides. I feel as though we've been one team, um, as as a, as a joint task force between all of us, um, in trying to get ourselves to where we are right now. With your support in this budget, Lewiston Public Schools will continue. Our resurgence, and I say that because we are in the midst of a resurgence right now despite the challenges, um, that we faced over the past few months. And we'll continue that resurgence through the next school year, regardless of the challenges that presented to us. Our budget addresses the barriers to excellence, and when you address those barriers, they become removed, and then you can move forward. By doing so, we'll continue to turn our school district around. The strength and pride of any community rests in its ability to prepare its citizens for the future. Let us continue along the pathway to excellence, and together we'll achieve our goals as a community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Finn. Uh, Chairwoman Roy, anything you'd like to add to this?
I'd just like to also echo the sentiments of Ms. Avery and Superintendent Finn. The cooperation with the city, um, I hadn't experienced that in a budget cycle before, and I'm just overwhelmed with, um. Pride at how it went, so I I thank you all for listening, for being a part of going through this, the challenges of doing this, and I'm, I'm. Happy about what we're presenting to you, and I'm. I'm hopeful that the taxpayers of Lewiston will also be, um, in favor of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I'm going to open the, uh, public hearing portion of this meeting and also turn it over to the council for any questions or comments. So I see, uh, no raised hands in the attendee portion. I, uh. So I would like to add, and you know, I'm hoping I I can speak for the entire council, uh, this year. Uh, working through the school department budget just felt different, and I've been through at least, uh, this would be my, uh, eighth one. Over the years, uh, and it just felt different. I think, you know, there there's always been cooperation, uh, but it was like distance cooperation in the past. Where this year felt like, you know, everybody was at the table. Uh, I also want to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Bobby Avery and Heather Hunter, because I just think they did a lot of work together. To get us where we are able to, uh, uh, pass on an actual tax savings to our constituents, all of us, and still provide. The needed services for our community, both in education and in, uh, city services. Any comments or questions, uh, from the council? And I don't see any raised hands. Is that correct, Dennis? Okay, any comments from you, Ed? Take off your, okay, good, thank you.
All set.
All right, with that, I'll, uh, close the public hearing, and there's no action at this point, correct?
That is correct, yes. So the school budget will be on the March, I'm sorry, the, uh, June sixteen city council agenda for approval.
All right, well, uh, thank you, Superintendent Finn, uh, Bobby Avery and Chairwoman Monique Roy, much appreciated. Much appreciated that you attended this meeting, and the public hearing is now closed, and thanks again. All right. Agenda item number three.
Yes, item number three, public hearing in first passage to repeal the portion of the Streets and Sidewalks Ordinance regarding the traffic impact fees for Outer Lisbon Street. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6, Outer Lisbon Street Traffic Impact Fee, receive first passage by a roll-call vote and to continue the public hearing to the next regular city council meeting.
Mayor, I saw a move.
Moved by Councilor Clement.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Jensen. And I'll open up the public hearing and also ask Ed or David, whichever one's presenting on this, to go ahead and start.
I'll let David do the presentation.
All right. Good evening, David. If you have video, if you could get that turned on for us.
There we go.
All right, thank you.
No problem. Good evening. So, yeah, we've talked about this last week at the workshop. We did adopt an impact fee back in 2005. The intent of that was to collect funds so we could actually construct a road out there with a center-turn lane and four travel lanes. That impact fee was adopted as a result of Nino's project that we've been discussing. We learned at that time that projects that require a traffic movement permit, which is 100 trips in a peak hour, need a safe area to make a left turn. That requires a center-turn lane out there. So, the intent of this impact fee was to collect funds to, in time, and make a five-lane section of road out there. As I noted earlier, it was very controversial. We've collected very few funds from this impact fee over the last 15 years. We've had one project to date, the Vineyard, that was $24,300, and as a result of previous council actions, that money went to Nino. Mike Connor's project, the Dunkin' Donuts that we recently, or the planning board recently approved, it would be contributing $11,500 towards this impact fee. Given discussions that we've had with Mike Connor and his project representative, it's become apparent to us that this impact fee is not effective. It's not ever going to collect the funds necessary to construct a five-lane section of road out there. The intent of impact fee is to offset those costs, so one person doesn't get left with having to make all of these improvements at the end. If it was done correctly, we'd be collecting funds either in advance proactively to make improvements and anticipating growth or to offset those costs later on. Ed has mentioned situations where maybe a traffic signal is in place. For example, right now, the last person in for an intersection would have to make all the improvements for a traffic signal because we don't have an impact fee in place. In an ideal world, we would probably proactively put that traffic signal in place and have an impact fee to collect funds to go towards those costs. But right now, it's the last person in that bears the brunt of these costs. So, again, we're trying to repeal this ordinance. It's not effective. It only gets triggered when you have a project that triggers 100 trips in a peak hour. Ideally, an impact fee would be in place for any change of use with any trips that are added to the roadway out there. The way this ordinance is drafted, it does not do that. Therefore, it's another reason why we're not going to collect funds anytime soon out there. We've since learned that the number of trips out there has not increased dramatically on Lisbon Street. There was a concern back in 2005 that there would be this exponential growth in that three lanes out there would not be adequate to carry today's traffic capacity out there. Based upon the numbers we had in 2005 as well as the numbers we have in 2019, there's not been a lot of growth in traffic going to and from the town of Lisbon along that section. Point being is we have a ton of capacity out there with two lanes and a center-turn lane. The center-turn lane out there will accommodate any projects going forward that require a traffic movement permit to make a safe left turn into a site. I think that's really it. As we've mentioned, our recommendation, staff's recommendation, is to repeal this ordinance. Ed alluded to one of the issues that needs to be discussed is if we repeal this, there's an obligation to reimburse Nino Corporation. I do believe, based upon what was discussed at the council, the next hearing, which I guess would be on the 16th, you folks would take an action regarding that reimbursement, and I'll look to Ed to clear this up here in a moment as far as how we would go about this. But the thought tonight is tonight's the first reading to repeal this ordinance, so there would be a second reading on the 16th. So, I think we would be in line accommodating any action you folks take with any reimbursement. I guess it's a quick summary. I'm not sure how concise it was, but certainly I'm open to any questions you folks may have. I know the project representative here for the Dunkin' Donuts, Mike Connor, is available too if this question's ready.
All right, very good. Thank you. Ed, anything you want to add? You have to take yourself off mute.
No, the only thing I would add is that procedurally, ordinance has come before orders. So, on the 16th, the second reading of this ordinance would appear prior to any action reimbursing Nino. So, if you're not comfortable, if you would like to see Nino reimbursed via the ordinance, next week, you should probably table the second reading. I don't get the impression that's what the council's going to do, but I just want to make sure you understand that if you want Nino to be reimbursed through the ordinance, you really need to keep the ordinance in place for a period of time to allow us to recover the funds.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Connor, is there anything you'd like to add, or Mr. Gatto?
I'll just add that, Mr. Mayor and Council, we submitted some information technically back in April to you. You guys have received that. We think the ordinance is unfair. We think it should be repealed. We agree with staff. So, I guess at this point, we're just supporting the move to repeal the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connor.
No, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. And then I don't see any public comments waiting. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and call the roll, please.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connor and Mr. Gatto for attending the meeting. Okay, agenda item number four.
Item number four, emergency ordinance amending Section 62-13B2 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the collection of solid waste and recycling materials from multiple-unit apartment buildings. Requested action to hold a public hearing and give final approval to an emergency ordinance amending Section 62-13B2 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the collection of solid waste and recycling materials from multiple-unit apartment buildings.
Okay, thank you. So moved, yeah.
Seconded.
Joy, and seconded by Councilor Jensen and City Administrator Barrett.
Okay, this is one of the series of actions that we have taken and will continue to take to try to address some of the economic fallout on our businesses and building owners in the community. We have a lot of multiple-unit owners who participate in the city's solid waste program where the city collects their solid waste and recyclables, and we charge them $170 per unit per year and require that they make two semi-annual payments, one in July and one in January. So, actually, they have to be done in advance, so the July payment is normally due in June. Given that we have heard from a number of our landlords that they are having some difficulty in collecting rents and keeping their tenants up to date, we think requiring them to make a sizable in-front payments, a six-month payment in advance, could be a burden. So, we would like to change the system to allow them to pay for the next, for the first six months, July through December, just one month at a time, and then for January, February, and March, a payment equal to two-months payments to allow them to phase back into making the two semi-annual payments. This has to be done as an emergency because the payments are now due prior to July 1st, so we need to get this enacted in advance. Emergency ordinances are only good for 61 days. So, the next item you will see on the agenda is a non-emergency version of the same thing, which will allow us to get a permanent change of the ordinance to carry us through the period where we will be adjusting the payment schedule.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'm fully in support of this. I spend a lot of my constituent relations time talking about trash, especially at multi-unit buildings and speaking with code enforcement. Just had a nice long call with Ben Westman today about it, and so I think moving to this monthly schedule where we're accommodating those people who are attempting to invest in Lewiston, it just seems smart while also keeping our services up to date. So, I just wanted to express my appreciation for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
And Word Three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number five.
Item number five, ordinance amending Section 62-13B2 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the collection of solid waste and recycling materials from multi-unit apartment buildings. Requested action to hold a public hearing and approve first passage of an ordinance amending Section 62-13B2 of the Code of Ordinances regarding the collection of solid waste and recycling materials from multiple-unit apartment buildings and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Clement. We heard the city administrator's presentation from agenda item number four. Are there any questions or comments from the council? And just to double-check, Ed, you covered everything in your first presentation on that. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, emergency ordinance amending Section 22-36, licenses denied, appeal to waive the requirement that business license applicants are current on all amounts owed the city. Requested action to approve the emergency ordinance amending Section 22-36, licenses denied, appeal to waive the requirement that business license applicants are current on all amounts owed the city.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Khalid, seconded by Counselor Jolinas. Did you attempt to move it, Counselor Jolinas? No, I'm sorry. So, I need a second.
Seconded.
Counselor Jensen got to it before you did. Thank you, though, Counselor. All right, Ed?
Okay, once again, this is an effort to be responsive to the economic situation that many of our businesses find themselves in. Those businesses that need to have business licenses, we have an ordinance requirement that they must be current with the city at the time of renewal. We already delayed the need for people to renew their licenses if they were actually closed during this period where we've had limitations on business activity. So, they don't, a business that was closed doesn't have to renew their license until 30 days after the expiration of the emergency situation. But at the same time, we recognize that there is going to be a period of time where these businesses are struggling with cash flow and that as a result, they're probably going to be prioritizing and trying to deal with a whole bunch of demands on what cash they do have coming in. This will basically eliminate that requirement for a period of time, effectively through March of 2001, which we hope will provide those businesses with sufficient time to reestablish themselves and get in a position where they can become current on their obligations to the city. Again, this is kind of deja vu all over again. This is an emergency ordinance, which will expire in 61 days because we have built a business premise that come due at various points. We're also asking that a regular ordinance amendment be done that accomplishes the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might not be available, but I'm just curious if anecdotally we have a lot of these requests coming forward, and if they're coming from small businesses in our community or more of the corporations.
A lot is kind of hard to quantify. I mean, there are some peaks and valleys. The items that are due range from tax payments to solid waste payments to stormwater fees. So, when we have license renewals, we will send the list over to the finance department, and they will review it, let us know who is in arrears 60 or more days, and then return it to us. The business can settle in full with the amount that's due or make a payment arrangement with the finance office, and that's perfectly acceptable, too. So, oh, gosh.
Most of these licenses are for relatively small businesses, so it'd be restaurants, food service facilities, tattoo parlors, those kinds of things that are required to be licensed by the city. Probably just pick up some larger businesses. Generally, we don't have difficulties with the larger businesses, so if Hannafords, I don't even know if they do, if they need a food service license, it's unlikely that they're going to have a problem, but a lot of the restaurants right now might be a problem with them coming up with the funding, given everything else that they're trying to pull together to get back up and running.
That's helpful context. I asked because I was on with the mayor of Bangor earlier today, and she noted that it was mostly the larger corporations that were kind of pushing for these change in ordinances, and so I was just curious what that might look like in Lewiston, so thank you.
Hi, Counselor Jolinas.
I just want to say that I think that this requested action, I like the idea that it provides businesses with a window to get reestablished during a time that's really needed, so I just wanted to say that I'm really in support of this.
Yeah, you know, I'm pretty impressed because a lot of these things are very small things to businesses, but when you add up some of the work that staff has done to pull together several areas that were helping small businesses, it does add up, so thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
And Word Three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, ordinance amending Section 22-36, licenses denied, appeal to waive the requirement that business license applicants are current on all amounts owed the city. Requested action to hold a public hearing and approve first passage of an ordinance amending Section 22-36, licenses denied, appeal to waive the requirement that business license applicants are current on all amounts owed the city and to continue the public hearing to the next regular city council meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jolinas. Like Ed said, deja vu, same presentation. So, any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Counselor from Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, please.
Item number eight, resolve adopting the Local Foods Local Places Plan. Requested action to approve the resolve adopting the Local Foods Local Places Plan.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. And Ed will be presenting on this?
Yes, and I will note that Julia Harper is in the audience, and she was one of the presenters when we looked at this at presenters when we looked at this at a workshop a couple of weeks ago. Good Food Council of LA, working with U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Technical Assistance Grant, pulled together a bunch of stakeholders to work, look at the issue of local food production, processing and all of those kinds of issues in the area as a way to further develop economically in our community and in our region. It gets pretty apparent that this region, as well as other parts of Maine, have a lot of local food producers and that we need to capitalize and support them. It's really nice to be able to spend money here locally and know it's going to a local farmer as opposed to, you know, going to somebody in the Central Valley of California. So the plan was put together with a bunch of stakeholders, eighty-plus people who attended a meeting to go through and work on this effort. Over a couple-day period, they spelled out an action plan with the number of steps to try to meet certain goals, strengthening access to local food while expanding market opportunities and infrastructure for farm and food businesses, integrating local food and agriculture into city planning and economic development strategies, building food and agriculture as a defining brand for Lewiston Auburn, and increasing equitable, equitable access, ownership and preservation of land to grow food in Lewiston Auburn. Know there are a couple of specific things that are addressed to the city, one of which is to deal with potentially some of our zoning and land use ordinances that may have inadvertent or negative impacts on food production in the community. And the second is a food sovereignty ordinance. We have a partial food sovereignty ordinance in effect, but I think there are ways that this group would like to see us expand that. And I know they have some working groups that are, that are working on both of those issues. So that's kind of an overview. I don't know if Julia would like to add anything?
If we could unmute Julia?
Thanks, Ed. Hi. Hi. I think that was a really great overview, Ed. I don't really have much to add other than I think that we were, there's a lot of specific actions in the plan, and we were hoping that the council would adopt it, recognizing that it's a snapshot of a moment in time and that it was a community-driven plan and that really we, we, we want to encourage the city to move towards the goals with, you know, the actions as suggestions that were developed by the community.
Okay, thank you very much, Julia. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I'm very happy to support this, very looking forward to it. Been looking forward to this for a while. Want to thank the involvement of everybody, I guess, involved in the long process. It really was community-driven. I got to participate in a couple of events throughout the process, and emphasis on community was pretty strong for both Lewiston and Auburn. So, you know, I don't, I really don't know what else to say other than, you know, I support it. Talking about issues like value-added products versus raw products, I don't think Lewiston consumers really, you know, talking about jams or jellies or, you know, something pickled. I don't think consumers are having too many concerns about those products, so I think they're going to be pretty comfortable buying those. So I know that was kind of a big roadblock for some of this. And I'm really optimistic about what this could do for economic development in our city, and I think there's a lot of things that we haven't even considered that are going to happen, that are going to be positive for the community. So I'm very happy to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I would agree. I think this is a great move for our city and for small farmers in our community and, you know, just folks who want local, healthy few food. And then I'll remind the council by adopting this resolve, any ordinance changes will be coming before the council, and we'll have the opportunity to discuss it in a public setting so that we hear input from all. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Council from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Thank you. Word two?
Yes.
And word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, resolve adopting city goals and priorities for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one. Requested action to approve the resolve adopting city goals and priorities for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-one.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilor Clement, seconded by Councilor Joy. And Ed?
Sure, I think the council knows that back in February, late February, we held a all-day planning session on a Saturday, and as a result of that session, came out with a series of priorities, goals and priorities for the two-year term that this council will serve. Those have been reviewed on a couple of occasions, and what you have in front of you has changed a little bit from the initial summary in that the community safety item has been moved up on the list so that it comes right after economic development. And I think there was, those can be interchangeable either direction. And then I added in placemasing, excuse me, in placemaking, a new bullet to implement our communications marketing plan focused on placemaking. So, excuse me.
All right, thank you. I want, so I guess the biggest thing I want to mention, so under economic development, I notice it has bullet points of, you know, different things we're going to take, but it doesn't mention that we want a, a plan, an economic development plan for the twenty-first century. So I personally would suggest to the council that that actually be at the top of the bullet point list, that, you know, we're going to be asking our police chief to do a, to creating a policing plan for the community. And I'd like to add, I'd, I hope the council would wish the same when it comes to economic development, that that's probably the first step, developing some type of plan. Councilor Jalinas?
I would agree with that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And Ed, you mentioned, I'll get right to you, Council, you mentioned placemaker. Where did you say that was? Unmute, okay?
It's the last bullet in item F.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Last bullet in item F.
Okay, so that didn't get...
Communications marketing plan.
Right, but I thought you said that had been kind of moved up with these. Now, you mentioned it in your presentation.
That was actually not on the initials, but it was something, it was, I added that based on some of the discussions that we had at the various workshops.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilor Ray, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, again, this was a great collaborative process, and we've obviously gone through significant changes since we had this first discussion. I think one thing that I just want to redraw attention to is under placemaking, enhancing recreational improvements in this community and our recreation department. There was a big conversation about not filling one of the vacant positions, and I believe there are ensuing conversations as a result of that decision. And so I just want to think about each part of this in the context that we now have versus the context in which we first came up with this. I am still very supportive of these priorities, but just wanted to allude to that.
Mr., a real, real quick comment. One of the things we are going to be doing is scheduling a series of workshops. One of these is going to be obviously on leasing, it's going to be next Tuesday. The following one would be on economic development. And I know that Dale and Dennis and I have been talking about doing one on the whole issue of recreation and where it goes. I think we primarily have been interested in working with Jason to come up with a little bit better plan for when and how we would restart the department. And knowing that, then we could have come, put together a plan on how to try to address some of the concerns that people have expressed regarding both recreation program or in the recreation program as a whole. So it's on our list of things to bring back before the councils in the near future.
And what do you anticipate, you said, you know, you spoke that we're going to have policing workshop next week, and then economic development. Are you anticipating a couple of workshops for each item? I mean, do you think...
Depends on how they go. Why, you know, it's certainly, we can have, we can structure it however the council, however it works with the council, depending on how the first workshop goes. If we need another one, we could certainly schedule a follow-up. Or depending on whether some specific things come out of that workshop that the council wants to follow up on, we could revisit it at some point, couple months in the future, depending on what the issues are that need to be addressed and the time it might take to do some work on them.
Thank you. Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Mr. Barrett for adding the spot about placemaking. It kind of incorporates like visibility, city image all into one. So I'm really happy to see that as a separate, separate item here. And is it common for city councils to have like such a long list? Because I know in the school committee, we talked a lot about how the goals just seem kind of like unachievable, there's too many. So is this like the standard format that we follow? Because I thought we were going to shrink it down a little bit, but I could have been mistaken.
Yeah, I think it generally has been the frequent result of our planning sessions to have a long group of issues. It doesn't necessarily mean that all of these issues will get addressed, and I think that's one of the things that the council was talking about the last workshop sessions is what are our priorities? The two immediate priorities that, that have come up are obviously economic development and public safety. I think the, the one we talked about just a minute ago in terms of recreation program is something that's been discussed a lot and deserves some attention. Some of this other stuff is just stuff that for the, I think, staff to be aware of and to keep in mind as it's doing its work and may not require as much council attention or it may change over, over time as, as things change in the, in the universe. I don't think anybody planned on the COVID issue disrupting our plans to the extent it did, and potentially other things will rise or fall in attention depending upon circumstances. Just because things are, are on this list doesn't mean that they will not be addressed. You know, for example, down here somewhere is the looking at all the boards and commissions. That's something that I think staff can start pulling together information on rather than the council having to worry about it till it's all ready. So we can get that information, pull it together and bring it to you. Some of the other stuff is going to be like reviewing a second water line for Lake Auburn. That's already in process, and there will be information coming forward there through our public works department and our capital improvement plan. So a lot of that, it kind of is a mix of where the council wants to put its emphasis and attention and also information provided to the staff so that they can start working or continue to work on some of these efforts.
And I would just add to Ed's comment that at any point, you know, as we're working through policing and economic development, if a counselor sees something on the list that they believe should be prioritized higher, we can bring that up for discussion. So I think this list is constantly being reevaluated as we move on, but Ed was so right that it really is a guide for staff as they work through policy discussion to bring before the council or ordinances, you know, and just think it's a good guide. Councilor Khalid?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of my questions has been answered by administrative Ed, and thank you, Alicia, for bringing the recreational department issue up. I wanted to continue to emphasize and highlight that department. For a long time, it has been overlooked, and it has been suffering, and it's in this budget season, like all other departments, has taken a big hit. It does deserve attention, but also it requires action sooner than later. And Jason and I have been talking, and he has given good suggestions that we need to, that we need to look into further and support him. And because right now everyone is stuck at home, right now we need to be there for our community members. Right now, it's not the time to overlook our not prioritize direct department. It should be upfront. And I hope, I hope we can bring in Jason, maybe this sometime very soon, and talk to him about what he thinks or, or have a smaller meeting because what, what he has suggested is good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Call the roll. Oops, I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Go ahead, City Administrator Barrett.
The mayor suggested adding under economic development a bullet right at the top to develop an economic development plan for the twenty-first century. If you would like that there, you could certainly do that as a friendly amendment. If the, if the motion maker and seconder would agree, we just go ahead and make that change. I'd agree to that.
I have no idea who made the motion.
Kathy, who made the motion in second?
Yes, Councilor Clement and Councilor LaJoy, and they both just commented that they are supportive of that.
Okay, so that would be included in the vote.
Okay, Councilor Ray, did you say something that I missed?
I couldn't remember if I had made the motion or not. I don't know what's happening.
All right, just one more time, any comments or questions for the council, from the council? If not, call the roll, please.
Council from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
And word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number ten.
Item number ten, adoption of city council meetings scheduled for the months of July and August. Requested action to suspend section one A of the rules governing the city council and to hold only one regular meeting during the month of July, said meeting to be held on Tuesday, July twenty-first at seven P.M., and to hold only one regular meeting during the month of August, said meeting to be held on Tuesday, August eighteenth at seven P.M.
Okay, thank you. And I see, Ed, if you have something to present, I know this is...
Well, just, yeah, just basically, it has been the tradition of the city to only meet once, city council only meet once in July and August. We sent that out. There was some discussion and feedback from some council members that they felt, given the circumstances that we're facing now, which are unusual, it might be appropriate to rethink just meeting once in July and once in August. So I thought I would just bring that up. I mean, it's certainly up to the council whether they would like to meet more often. The normal meetings in July would be July seventh and the twenty-first, and in August would be August fourth and eighteenth. I will note that even though we only schedule one meeting in each month, there is always the potential for a special meeting being needed or being called for, for some other purpose. But certainly, whatever you folks desire is fine with, with us. When I first got here, I was kind of shocked that you only met once a month, so, but it's kind of nice, too.
And you, and you kind of see what's, you know, what, what we have before us and, you know, in the future. Do you see any issues with what's coming before us in the near future for those months?
At the moment, things have been so consumed by the COVID situation that we have not had a whole lot of staff time to work on other issues. I don't know to what extent that's going to continue. If, if the COVID situation starts to calm down and people start getting back to normal, I suspect there's a backlog of stuff that could come forward. I know that planning has been continuing to work on the changes to our zoning code associated with design review, and there are probably other issues as well that have been pushed aside and aren't being dealt with. At the same time, I'll also point out in past years, summers, July and August, quite honestly, they have been slower months because so many people, historically at least, have disappeared on July fourth and reappeared the day after Labor Day. So it's hard to tell, it's hard to tell.
All right, thank you, Council. Councilor Ray, and then Council of Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to voice...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to voice, so I didn't jump in to make a motion because I don't. Feel that now is the time to to take our foot off the gas. There's so much that we need to do for our constituents at this point. And I just think any attempt to ease up on that in July and August. Could have, you know, kind of a domino effect down the line. And so if we are voting on a motion to move to one meeting in July and one meeting in August, I will not be supporting that. I think it sends the wrong message to this community who's been struggling and innovating and trying to come up with the right. Solutions with us. And so I will be hoping that we keep our regular meeting schedule personally.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Patton Gill and then Counselor Jalinas.
So I've personally never been in favor of taking a light schedule in the summers. But even more so now, and I think it's, I think it would be inappropriate for us not to continually meet. And be a face out there for folks in the community. So as I'd already said in some emails over the weekend, I can't support a reduction in our our schedule over the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jalinas.
Mr. Barrett, can you help me understand what the workshop schedule looks like during the months of July and August for the council members?
During July and August, we normally don't have any workshops at all except those associated with the council meeting itself. So we normally have one meeting, no workshops, and that's it. I'm going to say it is not unusual for us to need to have a meeting during that period of time. Probably every other summer, there's at least one meeting that gets called for some purpose. But it's usually a single item type meeting. So. You know, that's certain. And I will also point out that the workshop schedule is kind of flexible. As you've probably noticed, sometimes we have one workshop meeting a month, just workshop. Usually the second Tuesday. Other times when we also have some on the on the fourth. And every once in a while, we'll have any at all. So I mean, that's certainly, it depends on what the workload is and what's coming forth from staff and the public.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have got to agree with those who have spoken so far this evening. I don't see abdicating. Our regular schedule, given the time we're in. I could see having our regular council meetings with a workshop before those council meetings. But at some point, this is going to break. I've got to feel that it's going to break sooner rather than later. I felt that right along, haven't necessarily been right right along. However, I think that asking the council to meet twice a month. When we've got people going through what they're going through out there because of this COVID thing is not asking too much. I could not support and would be voting against any decrease in the meetings tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, call the roll.
There's no motion, Mr. Mayor.
We don't have a motion on the floor, so we could do it a couple of ways. We could put a motion, have someone move it to have the motion on the floor and people could vote it down. Or someone can make a motion to postpone indefinitely, which would essentially kill this motion. We could also just simply, I guess, have it removed from the agenda as an option, too. But since it is on the agenda and is sort of in the record, it probably would be best to have a vote to postpone indefinitely. Which shows that you've taken action and made a decision on it, and that would be to basically kill the motion.
Okay, and I would suggest that that avenue. So I'll entertain. Counselor Ray, do you have a question or?
Right. Okay, here we go. Sorry, my hand is there we go. So I believe three counselors raised their opinion that they would not support this motion in particular. And so I didn't hear a fourth person. And so we might just be a vocal minority. I just wanted to give.
I'm sorry, interrupt, but I will, I didn't know, I don't know how how this process goes. But I am in support of those who spoke against, who are not supporting what's on the agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor, were you done, Counselor Ray?
Close enough.
Okay, Counselor Clement, do you have another comment or question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time, if you're looking for a motion, I move that we table this indefinitely.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Clement and seconded by Counselor Ray. Counselor.
Yeah, well, actually, I was just going to say, seeing as how we have, sorry. Four counselors looking to vote against this, it might be more symbolic for us to have a vote on it. And vote it down to say that we are committed to being out in the face in front of the community.
Okay, Counselor Clement.
Yeah, I can agree with Counselor Patton Gill on that. And for that purpose, I withdraw my motion.
Cool.
Okay, and do you have a new motion?
Move the question.
Second. Yeah, we need to. Suspend section A.
Yes, all right, you're getting me a little confused now, guys. So we need a clear motion for the clerk. Madam Clerk, do you have a suggested wording of that?
Right, so if I believe Counselor Petten Gill's recommendation is to have the motion that's pre-approved in your book appear before the council. And then those who want to vote against it can vote against it. Is that correct, Counselor Petten Gill?
Yes.
Right, so we would just need someone to make a motion to approve the matter that's pre-printed in your agenda binder.
So moved. Okay, so moved by Counselor Clement and at this point. It was seconded at this point by Counselor Jalinas. But I do believe the entire council, if they had the opportunity, would have moved and seconded this question. With that said, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word four?
Hold on, I have to have the right one. No, yes, I don't know. No.
Yeah.
Word six?
No.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
No.
Word two?
No.
Word three?
No.
That motion failed by a vote of zero to seven.
All right, that was a, that was a great way to handle that. So I appreciate everybody chiming in on that. And very important message to send our community. So thank you. Agenda item number 11.
Item number 11, appointment of a member to the Public Health Committee. Requested action to appoint the following member to the Lewiston Auburn Public Health Committee. Dr. John Alexander, area residency term to expire January 3rd, 2023.
I moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Clement and Deputy City Administrator Dotte.
I actually, what we basically have here is we have a new member appointment for the Public Health Committee. That is supported by the Public Health Committee at this point. And we are, that's really all I have at this point and just hope to get our membership fully, fully established.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments, Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a member of that committee, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Alexander. He attended as a guest, and I just think he'd be an incredible asset to that committee, and I just wanted to, it's great to know that.
All right, great. Through this pandemic, I've had pretty, pretty regular conversations with Dr. Alexander. And I agree, I think he's going to be a great addition. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number 12, reports and updates. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be reporting on two separate items tonight. The first is my school committee report. So we had a meeting last night. Heard about our special education audit, which is going to be incredibly important in formulating our fiscal year 22 budget. And creating a plan for that department moving forward. We expect to receive a report back from the group that's doing that assessment by June, no, July 1st. And so really hopeful that that illuminates some paths forward for that program. Additionally, we received a report on summer school 2020 and how that will be conducted digitally. As well as through enrichment activities that will be provided to students from elementary through the high school level. We also received and approved a family and community support coordinator position. That will be funded through a separate position that we weren't able to fill. And so we redirected that funding towards this person who has a really big job. But if anyone's interested in working to support. Both our special education communities as well as our ELL populations in a district level position that's posted to the LPS website. And then finally, very exciting news that Lewiston High School graduation will take place this Saturday, June 6th. At Lewiston Auburn Airport. J D four Assistant Principal at the High School always does an incredible job and continues to do so even through the time of COVID-19. In planning for and celebrating the seniors. I hope you've seen some of the media coverage about celebrating the top 10, celebrating all the graduates. And hopefully, it's a really safe and smooth process on Saturday. So I just wanted to highlight that for everyone. My second report is, I had emailed you all about meetings with federal delegation about. Future federal pandemic relief funding. And so we've now met with Congressman Golden's office today, as well as Senator King's office last Thursday. And we are hopeful to meet with Senator Collins's office this week. The kind of avenue that we're approaching through those conversations is talking about direct relief to municipalities. Whereas the CARES Act sent money to the states and to school systems directly. So really looking to help us through this so that we can help our residents, our constituents, our business owners in the most direct way and as quickly as possible. I will say Congressman's Golden, Congressman Golden's office has a lot of really fantastic people working there. Who offered to help with small businesses and also grants. So there's some national endowment for the humanities grants as well as N B R C. And so if anyone on our staff needs help with those or wants a letter of support, they were very generous and offering lots of time and knowledge. So I just wanted to highlight that for everyone.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jalinas.
I just wanted to report out on, I hope I'm not cutting in, Counselor Ray, but just reporting out on the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee. We've had, I believe, two or three meetings since our last council meeting. And I've been working just on trying to do some some education and messaging regarding masks. Because it's a very controversial topic and one that can be divisive at times. So we've worked really hard with this group to get some messaging out, not just on the website for the city, but through social media. And just encourage folks to continue pushing that out to help this committee out.
All right, thank you. City Administrator Barrett.
Yes, earlier today, I sent out to all of you, and I don't know if you all had a chance to to look at it. A proposal for a new kind of pandemic emergency loan program for small businesses. And I wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about it and. See whether the council had any interest in taking action on this right away, or if it wanted to. Make some adjustments, changes to it, maybe look at it again next Tuesday or whatever. But we have found in our economic development people and talking to a lot of the businesses. That there is, there are some gaps in the support programs that are available to them. Some people, for example, do not qualify in certain elements to the CDBG funding that we got for the extra program. Other people may be looking for just something very simple and straightforward. In terms of applications and stuff like that for for potentially very small loans. So basically, what we're looking at is setting up a, an emergency loan program. That would be used to support businesses, particularly small businesses. And probably more particularly, our restaurant businesses. Who have had some difficulty, been presented with problems because of the COVID-19 situation. And who have difficulty, you know, don't qualify or find it very burdensome to qualify. For some of the other loans and grants that are available. We're suggesting an initial capitalization of the loan program of $150,000. With the first installment of $50,000 that be set of, set aside for a first grant application. With the initial applications due by April, by July 1st. The funding would come from a old fund that the city has. It was set up a number of years ago, Heather helped me out here, the Land Development Improvement Fund or something like that. That was set up to provide a non-federal support for economic development projects. So this is kind of in the same line of what was thought of there, except this would not be for. New economic development projects so much as for business preservation efforts. So what we'd be talking about is loans of up to $4,000 at 0% interest. For a two-year term with repayment beginning in June of 2021. Again, giving people the time to get their business up on their, on their feet. No collateral would be required. It's generally for small businesses defined as those with fewer than 50 employees or gross sales of less than 2 million. Based on their most recent federal income tax filing. Must be physically located in Lewiston. Business has other locations outside of the city. Funds must be expended at the Lewiston location. The business must be current on taxes and other charges owed to the city as of last January. So January 1st, 2020. That is in part a measure of the business's sustainability. Is it a business that was was doing well, was able to meet its obligations back then? Also recognizing that that may not be such a good measure for businesses today who've been shut down for the last two months or so. An acceptable credit report for owners with 20% or greater ownership. A determination or a judgment made, and that would be by the loan committee. That the business can be successfully reestablished to continue operations after the COVID-19 period. Again, as I mentioned, giving preference to restaurants. Given the additional costs and burdens that they're facing with trying to juggle what they had planned to be able to do with what they are actually able to do. Not being able to use their interior spaces for dining. Eligible uses, physical changes to the premises or equipment, implement social distancing. Furniture fixtures, equipment needed to expand into and utilize outdoor spaces. The initial cost of goods needed to reopen, rent or mortgage payments. Payroll upon documentation showing that the applicant has pursued but not been able to obtain funding through the federal payroll protect protection plan. Or the funding from that source has been exhausted. Credit card debt incurred within the last 60 days for qualified business expenses. It appears, at least we're getting some feedback, that some of our small businesses are actually. Dealing with their cash flow issues of reopening through putting things on their credit cards. Which, as you know, can carry significant interest costs. And then any technical assistance or business advertising to help plan for continued business operation and recovery. The loans would be reviewed, loan applications would be reviewed by the city's loan qualification committee. That's the committee that we now use for all of our loan programs. It's composed of myself, city's economic development director, Heather Hunter in finance. And Counselor Clement is on that committee along with one representative, well, a citizen who works in a, in a local bank. So this is what we're proposing to see if it would be one additional thing that the council might be interested in offering to our small businesses. To hopefully help them over at least the initial hump of getting back up and running and operating. So. Your choices tonight, if you think this is worthwhile as presented, we could certainly go ahead, suspend the rules and adopt this. We could also put it on the workshop for next, around a special meeting next Tuesday to be adopted at that time. If you wanted to have some more discussion tonight or make some suggestions or changes. I would note that it is probably likely that as we get into this kind of a program. We may want to make some adjustments or changes to it. So I'd suggest that the. Loan qualification committee be asked to to come back to the council. With any proposal change. With any proposal changes if they need them or to. Come up with some own of their own. Standards for who should and shouldn't receive these loans, so. Something for you to react to tonight and maybe adopt, maybe look at next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you can make that disappear.
I mean, the mayor disappears well, apparently.
I'm frozen, as far as I can tell. Matt, I'm not, did you hear, can you pull that down when you have an opportunity?
Yeah, it's down for most of us.
It's down for me.
You know, those of you who work at a city hall, you just get stuck, what can we say, you have such rotten internet service down there.
All right, so you know, the decision we need to make is whether we want to suspend the rules or not. And I see Councilor Jolinas has her hands raised, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am of the mindset that we need to act quickly on this, I think time is of the essence for a lot of businesses here locally. So that's one of my thoughts, I do have a couple of questions, I suspect, Mr. Barrett, from your language of. Owner that this is really just for for-profit businesses. And I say that because I didn't see any language otherwise in terms of eligibility, and I just would. Remind this group that there's a lot of valuable essential work being done for nonprofit agencies in this community as well. My second question is really around, I understand that the the pot of money is a hundred and fifty thousand, so if my math serves me correctly. We're looking at potentially thirty seven businesses that could be helped by this four thousand dollar. Allotment, and I guess what I'm wondering is, is that the cap, let's say the, I'm curious about whether or not this committee would consider. And, you know, let's say hypothetically, we didn't get thirty seven applications and there was a business locally that really needed more than four grand. Is the limit four thousand or would there be? Opportunity to assist a business with with more than than that?
The the limit under this program would be the four thousand, if a business needed that, it certainly. Could come back and ask the council to increase that limit. I will also point out that the fund from which the hundred and fifty thousand dollars is coming has about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it. So there would be the possibility to recapitalize this this fund if there was enough demand. So this, the theory here is that this is place to start and hopefully would be enough to deal with some of those immediate cash flow problems that a business. Is facing trying to get started. In terms of the nonprofits, I will point out, and I don't know if if Link wants to add anything here. That we do have some additional CDVG funding that came through the CARES Act that is set aside for nonprofit. Organizations, and I think those are those those are probably limited to to. The the typical nonprofit organization that's trying to deal with people who qualify for. CDVG kinds of programs may not be, wouldn't necessarily help, for example, the Chamber of Commerce or some other organization that's a C, whatever, a different kind of C. Nonprofit, but Link. Muted.
Sorry, to weigh in on that, we will have some funding available under the CARES program that the typical agencies that are able to. Apply for CDVG dollars, which benefited our low to moderate income people. This round, it'll be benefiting a lot of moderate income people that have also been impacted by the COVID pandemic. So that's one thing, I think with this new program being created, one of the reasons we we wanted to do it, I think nonprofits. Or agencies of the council wanted to go that way could do that with this four thousand dollar program, the reason. Our other loan programs are not open to nonprofits is it is not allowed by. By HUD regulations, but this new program which you're creating, which was with local dollars, there are rules can be determined by the council.
So so basically what Link's saying is if you wanted to open this up to nonprofits, we could.
And when we speak of the increase, and so my only concern, I think, I think we should be able to offer the opportunity to some businesses a larger. Loan, the only thing I think we'd have to be careful is to make sure we have collateral, the large, you know, if it becomes too large of a loan, we really have to try to protect the taxpayer dollar, consider that anyway.
Right. And that's one of the considerations we took into account here is as soon as you get to. Creating a collateralized loan, life becomes much more complex and complicated. In terms of loan underwriting and all of those kinds of things, so. We were trying to keep this as simple and straightforward as possible, recognizing, as I mentioned in my cover sheet on this, that. These will, many of these will likely be very high-risk loans. So we are not necessarily anticipating a high, you know, ninety five percent collection rate on them. Because we know that many of our businesses that may have in the past been sustainable. Have taken such a hard hit that they may not be sustainable in the future, depending on how quickly the economy bounces back.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really, again, appreciate the work that was done on this, I would be in favor of moving it forward either tonight or next week. I also appreciate hearing from the city administrator that the eligible uses could possibly change, considering what people bring forward to us, I think. There's even in the best attempts at trying to speak to all of the businesses affected or have them come to us. I think there were just surprises that could come up of what. What solutions people have come up with, because there are some very creative ones out there in the world, so I'd be amenable to. Taking a vote on this tonight or waiting till next week.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have but one question in regard to this, and that's why are we procrastinating? Let's move this ahead, therefore, I would move that we suspend the rules and take this up tonight, thank you.
Counselor, so we have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, moved by Councilor Clement, seconded by Councilor Jensen, Councilor Jensen.
I just wanted to quickly offer my support and to quote Councilor Jolinas, time is of the essence.
Great, Counselor Pendgill.
As much as I support this, I am going to vote in favor of it, I do just wish. To convey to the city administrator and staff. Probably the biggest heartburn of anybody that has received the PPP loan through the federal government. Is the moving target that's attached to that, so anybody that's received any sort of loan. To not be able to know what the criteria is or any of the metrics that are used for that will create a lot of heartburn. So if this does change after the fact. But let's not. Add cumulative changes, let's try to do it all in one shot.
And I think, so the way I understood it, Councilor Pendgill, if changes are made, it would be made has 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 were. Proceeding to different loans, so I don't think it would affect the initial loan, but if they're seeing that they could be a better. More beneficial by doing it a little bit different for the next person, that's how I saw the potential. Suggestion of changes, would you agree with that, Ed?
Yeah, we're not planning on making any changes that would be retroactive to prior loans, so if you get a loan to do X. Do X, and if X goes away or we add Q, next time. Come back and see us again, because there may be, as we said here, there may be several rounds of of funding here. And I don't necessarily think we could, we would refuse a second loan depending on the circumstances. But yes, I don't want to change the rules after people have received the loan, that the rules at the time they get the loan is are the rules they live under.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you, Lincoln. Take it off you. Don't give us that luck.
Yeah, sometimes you can hit their spacebar and it unmutes you, this time it wasn't, that's why I was like, come on. The one thing I would ask the council to take up, the way this was drafted and what was in your package, it was just for businesses, I think. Counselor Jolinas made a very good point that we do have plenty of nonprofits that are out there doing work, they operate just like businesses, it's just they're a nonprofit as opposed to a for-profit business. So if you want to move this forward tonight, I think just allowing us to expand that eligible. Right in the opening to small businesses and nonprofits in Lewiston, right in the opening sentence would be the one change I would recommend that you make, that's agreeable to the council.
Okay, so once we get through the suspension of rules, then make sure we don't forget that, Councilor Khalid.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I am supportive of what my colleagues have said and. Definitely including nonprofits is important because there's a lot of nonprofits in our community. But also the amount, I think four thousand is too little, but and we may not have thirty plus. Organizations applying for this, that we might have ten, fifteen, whatever, apply for, so I think we should have that. That ability to increase.
Okay, thank you. So we're doing this under agenda item twelve, and is that where it should be versus other city business, or does it matter?
I don't think it really matters, Mr. Mayor, we're basically done with all of our regular items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, call that roll, please.
Counselor from word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
And word three.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this program as presented by the city administrator.
With the addition, with the addition of nonprofits.
I have no problem with adding that in, I believe that would be in the first sentence, the opening sentence of the program, no problem with that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilor Clement, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Counselor from word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
And word three.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, agenda item number thirteen, any other city business? I have one. Just, I'd like to have a quick discussion about bringing back meetings to the chambers at some point. It's happening around us, I think the school committee now is back in session in their meeting room, I think the city of Auburn. Is back in session, so I want to throw that out there for discussion real quick with the councils. And get some thoughts. Councilor Ray. Go ahead, well, let's let Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one thing to keep in mind is that. Our council chambers are awkwardly shaped, I mean, we could certainly do do the meetings in there with with the council members. Separated appropriately. There are. You know, strong limitations beyond that, however, in terms of, obviously, at this point, we still had ten or they raise it to fifty now, Dennis, I think we're up at fifty maximum.
We're up to fifty now, so we would be able to.
But we could, to get to get social distancing in that room. We would have a hard time getting, I think, any more than maybe ten other people in there beside the council, we'd have to see how we could set it up, I mean, it certainly could. With the, so so the net, what I'm getting at is you you will probably, even if you go back to the council chambers. Be doing at a minimum dual function meetings. We have people present at the at the council in the council chamber, but you will still be using. Telecommuting, teleconferencing for other people because they won't be able to all necessarily come to the room. And you may have some individual counselors who select, self-select not to. I know for a period of time Auburn had at least one council member who was. Participating in the meeting through Zoom where the others were present in the room, just things to keep in mind.
No, and I, and that, you know, I was hoping would be part of the discussion that, you know, this wouldn't be mandatory, counselors could make decisions on whether they attend meetings or not. And then we would also have the executive conference room as a, where public could sit and watch through a screen if they want to attend, is that right?
The room in the back. Yeah, I mean, they could, but they could, they're gonna, they would be more effective if they were at home on their own computer.
Yeah.
Because if you're in the back room watching on a screen, you can't really. Participate as easily as you can through through being an attendee on a Zoom meeting.
Okay. So I just think it's time that we at least start talking about this, I'm not thinking that we're going to do this the next meeting, but I do think we need to start thinking, I mean. We're going to be, we're in June now. So Counselor Ray, you had your hand raised first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so just slight correction on the school committee comment, they have. Opened up meetings within the Dingley Building, however, myself and another member participated virtually last night. I would. Just note that I think we have been exceptionally effective in this forum and. I don't personally see. Any really compelling reason to move back into chambers, I think as things are slowly reopening. We need to wait and see how that goes, and I think if we do move back to chambers, I will elect to continue to participate virtually. Given the current timing, but I'm not sure how other counselors feel about that, I think. You know, we have to think about the different places that we're being required to go, so if I'm called back to work, I don't want to bring work germs to council members or to school committee members. If we're called back to council in person, I don't want to bring that to work, and so I'm just trying to consider all the obligations that everyone might have, and so I would. Continue to elect to participate virtually personally.
Okay, Councilor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this may shock my colleague from wood three, but I concur. Let's not rush into this yet, I think we're doing a very good job as it exists and, you know, there's no rush to do anything on the part of other. Government levels and things out there, so let's. Let's visit this cautiously and not necessarily right off the bat, thank you.
Thank you. Like to hear other thoughts from councils on this one, Councilor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I concur with my previous two colleagues. I kind of don't like the idea of some of us having to do remote and the rest of us being there, I'd rather us just all be there together, do remote meetings. I find remote meetings to be incredibly frustrating, I don't feel like we get to have the full conversations that we would otherwise in person. Especially like workshopping ideas and this upcoming, you know, I'm talking about the police. And plans for next week, you know, I'm as a resident of the downtown, I have a lot of thoughts on that, and I'm worried how that conversation is going to go, if it's going to be as good as it otherwise would be. So things like that do weigh on me, and so I'd much rather prefer a meet in person. But given where we are with the COVID related, that other counselors have concerns meeting, I don't think it's appropriate, appropriate for us to meet in person right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Jolinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I feel the same way Councilor Jensen does in terms of some of the frustration with doing. I mean, I think we're doing the best we can on this platform, but I think we're limited, I don't know that I would describe it as as awesome. There's a lot of discussions that I wish we could be doing face to face, but I want to respect what other counselors are feeling. I don't get the impression that you're saying that, you know, you're going to do this next week, like you said, I feel like you're just kind of. Bringing this up for for future, maybe in a month out or something, and I think things are changing all the time. My feeling is while there continues to be community spread in this community, maybe hold off, but when we can move past that, certainly, maybe we revisit this, because I certainly am interested in. Coming into the chambers for for meetings.
Yeah, no, this, I, please don't look at this as me trying to push this, I just think we need to start having these discussions, I. I disagree a little bit with Councilor Ray, I do not believe these are nearly as effective as being face to face, you know, together, I shouldn't say face to face, that's probably a bad word nowadays. But but, you know, I struggle with it, I know our budget season, I thought was probably, I just, it's really too bad, because that just isn't how budgets are typically handled. Considering what how we were doing it. Considering what, how we were doing it, I appreciate staff, and we did a good job, but uh, I'm, you know, I'm anxious to get back in the chambers, and I I want health and safety to dictate that. Councillor Khalid, you did have your hand up. I was, do you have something you want to add?
Um, yeah, no, I agree with with the rest of the councillors. I sympathize with um some coun- councillors who um cannot meet in person because of health reasons and um and right now, in the past few weeks, we've seen a spike um in COVID cases, and I think um we will continue to, unfortunately, especially where right now, there are a lot of protests going on um across the city and across the state, so we need to be very cautious um getting back to the chamber.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ray.
I just wanted to clarify, when I said effective, I think we have uh met needs that have been asked for. I do not think this is perfect, and I know I push technology a lot, so I just really want to clarify that. Um, I, there are still barriers here, um but I do think we we set an example for our community. Um, and I I think, you know, it was really hard to participate in last night's school committee meeting in that kind of bifurcated way. Um, I couldn't see anyone except for superintendent Finn, who who is great to look at for three hours, but um very difficult to gauge the temperature of the room because I didn't know what was happening there, so. Um, I think uh that blended model was a great accommodation that they've made for some of us, but um also not a perfect solution, and um I am eager to see people again. If you can't tell, I'm very um interested in having conversations, and so um I I know I've spoken with many of you um via text or via phone call over the past eight to ten weeks or so. Um, I would say I've spent more time on council in these past couple of weeks, or not couple, but many weeks um in trying to get to understandings with other committee or other members. Um, and so I'd encourage um everyone to just pick up the phone a little bit more if they are feeling that they're not able to have as rich of a discussion. Um, I found that's really helped me, especially on the school committee side too, so um I I don't know what you all are doing personally, but if that's helpful for you, um it's really helped me feel like I can talk through some things.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Joy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think uh my greatest concern would be the attendees and the lack of um in looking at that back room that you mentioned and the uh distancing, we could probably fit maybe six at the most, uh so that wouldn't increase the total from the main chambers uh anymore. So I guess based on on that fact there, um I would think that we should continue in the manner that we're doing. And uh maybe review it as we go along every week because things change so quickly. Uh, the other thing is that uh being in the chamber and having a uh uh protective cloth across your mouth, if you wish to do so, uh doesn't seem to be that appropriate at that time, so I I would stay the course, Morgan, and uh review it weekly. Thank you.
Okay, uh so thank you. I'll probably bring it up in another thirty days, and if something changes dramatically within that thirty-day period, uh then we could bring it up again, but I think uh, or if any councillor wants to discuss this again in between that, so. Thank you. Councillor Clement, do you have a quick comment?
Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, I I want to make it plain that I think that uh an in-person meeting in chambers is the ideal way to go. However, I just don't think we're at it there yet. We wouldn't be able to accommodate people, and councillor Lejoy just brought up the question of masks and the whole social distancing thing. This while working, I agree, it's not ideal, but it is working. And let's revisit it somewhere in the future when things are a little more relaxed perhaps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, deputy city administrator, Dote.
I just, uh, we did receive a uh message in the Q and A. Um, it was from an anonymous attendee. Didn't realize they could do that, but it was just a note that Auburn may have changed it, changed their meeting format um back to Zoom hundred percent. Um, so I'm gonna, what I'll do is I'll do a little uh research about other communities and just what what's going on throughout the the state and others are taking, and I think for our next discussion, or I'll certainly try to send you an update here, just what's going on, just for everyone's sake, but just want to clarify that about Auburn in particular.
All right, good, thank you very much. All right, uh, anything else uh in reference to other city business? Councillor Clement.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. Workshop time for next Tuesday?
Six o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Okay, one, I want to thank all the public that attended the meeting tonight, thank the councillors, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Oh, move. Second.
Moved by councillor Clement, seconded by councillor Joy. You gotta get quicker at this mic. All in favor?
Kathy will call the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
From word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
And word three?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, all.
Night, everybody.